Hi. Call the regular meeting of councils to order, please. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Three A should be minutes of October eighteenth.
Second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Thank you, motion carried. Item three, adoption of the minutes.
I move to adopt the minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, council.
I'll second.
Questions, anything corrections, changes, edits? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Another one for October thirtieth?
I move to adopt the minutes of October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting of council.
Second or? Any questions, comments, changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Motion for November seventh?
I move to accept the adopt the eight seventh of November the seventh, special meeting of council.
Second or?
I'll second.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item four, public input. We don't have any public here tonight, so I guess we don't have any input. Disposers, council.
Yes, I am declaring a conflict of interest for seventeen D. Full disclosure, your sponsorship, as I'm employed by the John Howard Society, he's beneficiary of that.
Thank you, councillor Fox. All right, moving on to chief crevice and report from the fire department.
Good evening, council. October was well fairly busy, we had twenty calls. Nine of those were accidents, as we say. Lot more accomplished since the snow hits. And eight of them are alarms as well. Any questions on last month's runs? Something I'd like to bring up as well is name change. And I think we discussed it before, was going like Upper Kings Clear, Hamwell Fire Department.
Who did not?
That was a suggestion. The biggest thing is, in Capitol District's twenty-two fire department. And we're lucky because it's just you and us, all one. Whereas some departments, like Grand Lake, departments, about three in that side.
One of them has, we got five, I think, in that area.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean? So that mutual aid agreement's all going to be changed and stuff. So other than that, you'd have to do one for Hamwell and have to do one for Upper Kings Clear. But it's all one.
We're good.
You know what I mean, it's easy to do. And you got the backing of sixty years of experience and big money, yeah, okay?
So in the fire budget for twenty twenty-three, we had budgeted for new logos and stuff for all of the trucks. So see our signs can come and just put, it will just be like Upper Kings Clear and then we'll put Hamwell on the bottom, so they'll be able just to make all those changes. So we'll try to get that done before the end of the year, so it can be paid for in the twenty twenty-three budget. If you guys are okay with Upper Kings Clear, Hamwell Fire Department.
Is that something we have to put through in a motion?
Um, we really should, because we're changing the name of the fire department.
See, right now, really true, we have two mutual aid agreements, in one sense of the way.
Really, yeah.
We have a capital district mutual aid agreement, twenty-two departments. And we just signed one predicated because they are going to omit the thing they've done with the capital district. So basically, it's the same thing as we just done, except everything is covered.
So now we're going to have mutual aid with Fredericton again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I knew you were working on it, I wasn't sure if it was in the plan.
It's been signed a few months ago.
Yeah. It's actually had Harry out today in Maryland, called them for a truck. Call came in as a vehicle fire. And the second call was a vehicle fire inside a building. The building was catching fire. So we get everything rolling, just in case. But they done a good job, they lowered the vehicle down off the hoist and dumped a whole pile of two-pound extinguishers out of all the tractors, it was a pearl care. So they all have fire tickets, they dumped a load of them on, truck pulled in. They didn't use garbage tank water to mop it up. And it didn't catch into the building, thankfully.
Thank goodness.
But we had lots of equipment and stuff there.
We had an incident, or somewhat of an incident with the garbage collection this last week on ashes. Do you get many, you know, ash, hot ashes from woodstoles? Did you see many of them?
We have over the years, it was a big house up in Spring Hill Road. And that's what caused that. Two days after they had a fire or whatever, the cleaning lady just put them in a garbage bag, put them out in the garage. At that time, it's Fredericton, well, still is Fredericton, I guess, they called us for mutual aid. We went in and that's what caused that fire.
Well, people put hot ashes in like plastic buckets, paper bags.
Carboard boxes.
Carboard boxes. And like I said, two days after, they're still hot.
Maybe a week after.
We get a couple of years, we get one every three or four years.
So often, yeah.
It's something people, you know, really should be made aware of, I don't know if we can put something out on their website? I think we already, yeah, but it's something to remind them to, you know, because it's certainly a concern with people not used to burning wood.
Actually, next time we talk to the office of fire marshal, I'll get them to maybe reiterate and get it out again. I know they have in the past.
Certainly, certainly can't hurt.
All right, I just got to get this straight, the mutual aid agreement, so we have two of them now. We've got the city of Fredericton and the capital region.
Capital district.
Or capital district, I'm sorry. So all the municipalities that are part of that are?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got to update the emergency plan properly for that. But, okay, that's good clarification, we can deal with that.
Yeah, there's twenty-two departments in the capital district, which includes Fredericton and not as well, so.
So I think the capital district one is in there, it's not the capital regions, it's the capital fire, the district.
Not the way it shows in the plan.
Should show Capital District Fire Fighter Association.
Currently, we list like Harvey in New Maryland. Yeah. I don't think we include all of the ones that are members of the.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, some wouldn't be like Minto Chipmunks.
Okay.
Although, we've gone to Minto.
So, we've been in Minto. Does it include all of them?
Well, it would be like, they would be Harvey, New Maryland, they would kind of be our backup, like there's probably.
Casey Grid.
Yeah, like we probably wouldn't be contacting Minto Chipmunks to come to the fire to us, so.
But they technically are part of the.
No, there's a difference between capital district and capital region service management, they're not one and the same.
Okay, we just got to get clarification.
Yeah, we'll brief you though.
And the capital district, if you need pumper tanker people, send it. In the past, I don't know if anyone ever got a bill for it. If you don't have a ladder truck, then you call ladder truck. That department can actually bill you for the ladder truck. Fuel, cost, the driver or whatever operator. So we get all our bases, we get boats, we get ATVs, or side-by-side and ladder.
We're pretty well equipped.
Yes. I have a truck, actually, pump one is two thousand and two, or pump two is over here. Stirling frame is bad, we'll pass inspection. The owner from XL Plinney looked at it, gave us a price. And his engineer looked at it and they give us a new price. Double the money, but they didn't realize how far, how bad it was. So about twenty-three thousand, I think.
Yeah, that's actually under my treasurer's.
So that's we can. To repair that.
Long way from the cost of a new one.
Oh, ten times.
Just exactly.
So anyway, that, he's supposed to give me a call when they're ready. I headed down there, engineer looked it all over, gives a new price. And he's got a couple jobs that's been there, he's got to get them done before he can bring us. He called me and I went down and got the truck and it's good to have in case something must have happened.
Well, just exactly, yeah, for sure.
That's cool to get a look at.
So the quote came in at twenty-three thousand, four dollars and thirty cents, plus HSD.
Any other questions for chief?
So before we accept the report, then, I suppose we should motion to officially change the name of the fire department. So since it sounds like representation of the chief, I'm willing to do that. I'd like to motion to officially change the name of the upper Kings, of our fire department from the Upper Kings Clear Fire Department to the Upper Kings Clear and Hamwell Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Great, motion carried, thank you, chief. Yeah, can I just get a motion to receive or accept the chief's report?
To accept the fire permit.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All those in favor accepting the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Anything else, you know how to get hold of it.
Yeah, nine-one-one always.
Nine-one-one.
Actually, I thought about it last night, but I couldn't find it. I couldn't find the little thing to pull. I would have too, my God.
Yeah. Okay, presentations, I don't believe we have any on the go for tonight. Building permanent applications, we have six, three new stick-built houses, two modular and a detached garage. So things are moving right along.
This is always so small.
Uh, we have a proclamation for Movember. And whereas Movember has taken on the three biggest health issues affecting men, mental health and suicide prevention, prostate cancer and testicular cancer, and as a result of this, men are living longer and healthier lives. And whereas Movember is a movement that has grown from thirty mustaches in two thousand and three to five million mustaches in twenty twenty-two. And whereas Movember is the leading charity change in the face of men's health and knows that what works for men and what doesn't. And whereas Movember has funded over twelve hundred and fifty men's health projects across twenty-three countries over the past eighteen years. Now, therefore, I do proclaim the month of November for Movember and urge Hamwell residents to support the worldwide initiative by growing a mustache. And I see some of us have already joined the fight, so expect the rest of you guys to step up.
We'll get right on that.
Guys.
I would award my favorite.
Okay, petitions and delegations, I don't believe we have any business arising. We have bylaw thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hamwell Rural Plan.
I'd like to move that bylaw number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hamwell Rural Plan being given its third reading by title in its entirety and enacted.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
Bylaw number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community, rural community of Hamwell Rural Plan. Pursuant to section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act, the council of the Hamwell Rural Community enacts the following amendments to the Rural Community of Hamwell Rural Plan, bylaw eleven dash twenty sixteen. One, that land having the PID seven-five-one-nine-nine-four-nine-seven, as shown on the map herein in tax, is scheduled I dash one, is hereby rezoned, subject to the terms and conditions contained in schedule I, I guess that would be, pursuant to section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act, from residential RR zone to commercial and light industrial CLI zone within the rural community of Hamwell, of the parish of Kings Clear and the county of York, being within the designated area of the rural community of Hamwell Rural Plan, bylaw eleven dash twenty sixteen. This bylaw shall come into effect and binding on all persons as of and from the date filed at their registry office.
Right, you need to read schedule one and then the second page.
Schedule one, this agreement made today. Between the rural community of Hamwell Rural Community, municipal body corporate, being situated in the county of York and the province of New Brunswick, herein referred to as municipality, and Travis Wallace in Marissa Lane, forty-eight Burnett Drive, Hamwell, New Brunswick, herein referred to as the applicant. Whereas the municipality has been asked to rezone the property currently owned by Alex White, located at seventeen eighty-seven Route six forty, PID seven-five-one-nine-nine-seven, from residential to commercial and light industrial under section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act, for the purposes of operating a health and wellness clinic. And whereas the municipality is authorized by the provisions of section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act to enter into an agreement with the applicant imposing reasonable terms and conditions as a resolution of council. Now, therefore, witness that for and in consideration of mutual covenants and agreements contained herein, the municipality and the applicant covenant and agree to as follows. One, that off-street parking be provided in accordance with the applicable provisions of section, subsection three point three of the Hamwell Rural Community Rural Plan. And A, include at least one barrier-free parking space in accordance with the Barrier-Free Design Building Code Regulation, Building Code Administration Act twenty twenty-one dash three. B, provision shall be made for turning and maneuvering of vehicles to allow egress from the site in a forward direction. C, the parking lot shall be graded and drained in such a manner as to ensure that the surface water will not escape out to neighboring properties or into a water course or wetland. D, parking lot and driveway shall be surfaced with a durable and dust-proof material such as crushed rock or pavement. Two, that all signs are in accordance with applicable provisions in the Hamwell Rural Community signed by law number ten dash twenty fifteen and in accordance with any applicable Department of Transportation and infrastructure policies. Three, prior to that, prior to any ground operations, the applicants contact the source and surface water management branch to verify potentially unmarked water course or wetland on the proposed area of development. Four, that alterations in or within thirty meters of a water course or wetland require a water course and wetland operation permit, Wawa, under the Water Course and Wetland Alteration Regulation, Regulation ninety dash eighty, as per subsection twelve-two of the New Brunswick Clean Water Act. Five, that outdoor lane be located, arranged or shielded, as not to interfere with traffic proceeding along Route six forty or with nearby landowners in a reasonable enjoyment of their properties. Six, that rezoning of lands herein does not in itself mean an approval on the issuing of subsequent permits or approvals, such as for the building construction or subdivision as designed. Any violation of the terms and conditions as set out by council resolutions and contained within these agreements may result in termination and cancellation of this rezoning within thirty days with notice. And witnesses herein, here to witness whereof the heretofore parties mentioned have heretofore entered, set their hands and seals on this day today.
Perfect. Congratulations.
That was a lot of big words in that, a lot of legal leas, it's not what I used to usually read.
Do you want to read it one more time?
You have to read it twice, or you just want to say?
No, it's just once, I would do the sentence.
Just your sentence again at the bottom, you kind of did it before you did it, you know, the.
Just reading the bylaw thirty-one.
Bylaw number again.
By title, I did that first before I started.
It's got to be read one more time, not just after you've finished reading.
That's unusual. Bylaw number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to amend the rural community of Hamwell Rural Plan.
Thank you.
Okay, because the way the motion was written originally said, third reading by title in its entirety and enacted, so the title being read first would have been the first part of that motion.
Anyway.
Instead of reading it second time, just for public motion of point of information, shouldn't you do twice?
We always do.
The Iben pump contest?
Yeah, we have to draw tonight, three actually. We have guests who can do it.
We actually have guests that could do a draw horse. Hello, guests. Before they leave.
Everybody run away. We pull it, we'll just take it.
Would one of you guests like to do us the honor of making a draw? Would one of you guests like to do us the honor of making the draw horse?
Sure, sure.
Come on.
So we have three.
Since you came all the way out.
We have three draws, so first we're going to draw for refund or free future pump from Nicholsworth Waste Management. So the winner is Megan Demouchelle. It's for that one.
I'll look that one up, we water it up.
Give that to us.
The next one is for Ready John, a free future pump. Got to mix them up well. Okay. This one is for Justine McLean. And then the final one is from the rural community of Hamwell, and it's a refund for their comp that they have done. Fifty fifty chance. Good odds.
I don't know where it is.
And that is.
Thank you.
Isaac Mio. There.
We have two winners.
So then, don't we do the same with all of them?
Yes, yes. That's what we always did when.
Okay, so, so we did it wrong then. So then, oh, Hamwell's too?
Did you do?
We only, I just did Hamwell, we only had two, we only had two people that, two companies that did it, normally we have three.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had the specific.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we just, Hamwell's just going to do one, yeah.
Don't forget.
I just saw the name here and I thought that it was.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item twelve A, email from resident food drive.
So everybody got the email? So.
So this is about a food drive, if somebody wants to take on a food drive.
Wouldn't that be something that Taylor would take on? Is it operation, it's more operation?
But it's not real, I mean, it's, it's a big project to take on, like, for us to host a food drive.
So normally what we've done in the past at our open house, we've had a box up front and had told people, put out a post that we would be collecting food or whatever. But really, for people to bring in food here and then us distribute it, we don't have the room to box up boxes of food for people or whatever. So I think that we could possibly put out a box that night and if people want to bring things in, and then we can take them somewhere.
Or if the writer of this email want to organize one and look after it, I mean, we could certainly support it.
Yes, we could, yeah, we can support it and maybe even, like I say, have a space for them to leave stuff and they could take it.
Yeah, like if they, they want to do it, but.
Have you been talking to her at all?
No, she just sent us the email.
So she's talking if we could, meaning herself, sounds like.
Maybe she get in touch.
She'll get in touch with her and like I said, we can certainly do whatever we can to help her out.
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, it's, again, staff don't have the, certainly don't have the time or the wherewithal to do it here. But I mean, she's just looking for her, our support, I mean.
Yeah, we'll certainly support it.
Councillor Highsley.
So I have a few comments, I guess, questions too. So could, could they not partner, if they wanted to do this, with the church for, with the Community Blessings cupboard too that they have? And also, in the past, when we've run, we've had craft shows, didn't we use the money from the tables to go to a specific charitable group? Or are we running one this year or are they all?
We did the, over at the church.
Yeah, we gave, we gave the money from the craft fair to the Community Blessings cupboard, and then she went and purchased.
And we did it this year too?
We haven't done it yet.
We haven't done one yet?
Right, we haven't done it yet.
Christmas craft fair is coming up.
Okay, and we are doing it, it's not just from the community, like somebody in the community doing it?
We are doing the Christmas craft, yes, we are doing it, so.
So that is a possibility, I was just thinking that might be a possibility.
I think if somebody reaches out to this, this person to see, you know, what, what she's actually looking for, if, you know, we can certainly support her morally. For sure, I think it's a good idea to get behind her some way, as much as councillor can to, you know, if she wants to take this on, by all means, she'll have the, certainly have the supportive.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to see what she wants to do and we can make, like I say, make a donation or help out in some way, for sure.
So why don't we basically get back to this lady and to see what her plans are and see what we can do to help her.
Okay, I'm secondly.
Okay, so get a motion to accept this correspondence, oh, sorry, councillor Fox?
Yeah, so I would just, I would just also suggest that we also let her know what other organizations, like the, you know, if the church is doing something like this, she may, she may have written this, just thinking like, how do we help, right? And if somebody's already doing it and knows where the need is, we might be able to direct her there and we can help it.
Yeah, I think we should get back to her and see what her ideas were, basically. So can I get a motion to accept this correspondence?
I move to accept this correspondence. From a resident of, of a food drive.
Well, it's going to take an action though, it's going to do something with it.
But it's. We don't know if we're going to take an action.
We're going to contact her.
Yeah, that doesn't, we don't usually accept for that which received.
Just received it, yeah.
Okay, so I've got a motion to receive.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, the other question or comment is the Rotary Club often does a food drive as well, so she, she might not realize.
No, we can certainly give her that information.
Oh, okay.
Give her more information.
Okay.
Just goes to the Frederick Food Bank or something, if I remember right, I could be wrong.
I think I know what the issue she's talking about, because I actually do believe I saw the same request on the Hamwell page, one specific individual reaching out.
So we'll, we'll reach out to her and see what we can do or what she actually wants. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Okay, item B is donation request for the Pappy campaign. We can either make a donation or we, I'll let councillor Fox speak on that, he's our resident charitable guy.
Well, I, you know, I'll, I'll make the motion. I move to accept the correspondence from the Royal Canadian Legion Fredericton Branch with respect to making a donation to the Pappy campaign and authorize and direct the clerk to make a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
How's our treasurer doing?
So, good, we have about thirty-three hundred left in our budget.
We're good for five hundred. So motion's been made and seconded by councillor Highsley, so any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Uh, the item D is a donation request to the Tri-County Minor Hockey.
So I'll speak on this really quickly. So this is based at a conjunction. I did send an email to them asking them, you know, how many residents from Hamwell would actually participate? I never get a response, so.
So most of our donation, doesn't our donation guideline, they'll clearly state that it's to benefit?
Hamwell residents, yep. Hamwell residents, yep.
So, okay.
So my thing was, counsel, um, where we didn't hear from her, that we hold off on this, because maybe we do have residents that use that facility, um, we will probably be having a special meeting here in the next couple of weeks anyway due to the budget and everything else, so this is something we could add, because I'm sure they take donations at any time, it's whatever, so I think that we should wait until we hear back.
Can I like the, yeah, yeah, I like the motion to postpone this donation request to the next special or regular meeting of council.
Questions, comments, all those in favor signify.
Comment on it. Um, it's fine that they're reaching out for a donation, but we have with the new amalgamation, this, with, the community is split between Fredericton Youth Hockey in Keswick, because of the zones. So they're basically now like, you, we could have, there's a number of kids, there's probably eight to ten kids at Merschel Settlement and along the river that play in Keswick, so.
So we're gonna find out if they play at the Tri-County, uh, complex.
Now they play in Keswick.
Okay, but this is something that they, they've reached out, so we'll, we'll see if anything.
But I mean, because we could see this from Keswick, you could see this from Fredericton, so.
And we, like I said, we have a policy to donate where it involves Hanwell, you know, which is all of Hanwell Kingsley, our, our whole municipality. So we can donate to our own first. Okay, so. Yeah, item E, email from Minister of DTI, RE Vegetation Growth and Speed Limits.
Oh, we didn't postpone it.
Oh.
Nope, I thought we just put that on, I think you made a motion to postpone it.
We think we have still voted.
Oh, okay, sorry, back the truck up. Did we have a second there?
Yes, we did, yes.
Okay, any questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Now, email from the Minister on DTI, RE Vegetation Growth and Speed Limits. Need a motion?
Do you want to?
We could read it into the record if we had, wanted to, sure. Okay, Mayor Morrison, thank you for your letter dated September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three regarding vegetation growth on Deerwood Drive, Mazeral Settlement Road and Somerset Drive. Several areas on roads mentioned in your letter have been identified for future vegetation management. Uh, we'll have staff conduct further assessments on these roads to determine if additional areas should be considered. Identified areas will be considered for inclusion in the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure DTI twenty twenty-four vegetation management program. With respect to your concerns about excessive speed on Deerwood Drive, speed limits on provincial roadways are established based on the design of the roadway and the environment in which it is located, many factors are taken into consideration including roadway geometry development, et cetera. The current speed limit for Deerwood Drive is considered appropriate for the area. If a speed limit is lower than practical for an area, drivers tend to show little respect for the posted limit, which results in a range of vehicle speeds. Variance in traveled speeds contributes to driver frustration, unsafe passing maneuvers, and a false sense of security for residents who believe a slower speed limit will be followed. Thank you for bringing your concerns to my attention, sincerely, Honorable Richard Ames. Last date at the November third, twenty twenty-three.
So we need a motion.
So need a motion to receive?
I move to receive the correspondence from the Minister of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure with respect to vegetation growth and reducing the speed limit on Deerwood Drive.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. We've got the, uh, the mayor's report, I think everybody's received the copy, but I'll, uh, draw your attention to page two, the November fourteenth budget meeting. That, I had that down, it's going to it, but since we canceled it, I didn't go. I think a couple of our councils actually showed up for it, so. So we were all of the same mind, obviously. So I need a motion to receive the mayor's report.
I move to receive the mayor's report as presented.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Item fourteen, age-friendly committee on hold, emergency measures did not meet, environmental stewardship committee on hold. Finance, council met in October, November, and the discussions of the meeting can be reviewed on the audio recording. Governance and policies meets as required, infrastructure and parks management council met, and the discussions of the meeting can be reviewed on the audio recording. Item G, Mactaquack Community Liaison Committee meets quarterly, uh, C O has updates.
I do, so as you know, um, we've sent out numerous, um, updates on the Mactaquack, um, dam closure. And it is now, I believe it started, last report I got was supposed to start yesterday, did it start yesterday? Okay. So it was going, um, to be Tuesday, November the fourteenth with a bridge closure beginning five AM and going until Saturday, November the eighteenth at five AM, so. Just, um, for anybody that needs to be over in that area, I would ask that you contact or follow, um, NV five one one, just to make sure that there isn't any changes, because we did receive three or four of them. Um, also with, I received an email yesterday, um, there's going to be a Mactaquack Dam Breach Plan Presentation. This is going to be at NV EMO, and it's going to be Monday, December fourteenth from ten thirty until twelve. And I think that that is something that Counselor Brinwell and I should attend, and Mayor Morrison, if you'd like to attend as well. Um, they have also provided us with a link for a team's meeting if we want to do it virtually, so I can send it out, they said that, um, space is limited because it's at the P O C. And so if something happens and, um, we can't attend in person, we can certainly do it virtually, so I will send this link out to you guys in case any of you want to, um, listen to it, but the dam is in our backyard now, I think it's very important that we really keep on track of what's happening there, so, um, I can give you an update at our next meeting after the presentation. That's it for me.
Okay, any questions? No? Item H, Rural Plan Review Committee, uh, we need a motion there to accept some new folks on the committee.
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept Bonnie Hoyt-Hallett, Candace.
Declan.
Declan. I know it, but I don't understand. Declan.
Does it leave that a lot?
Leave that. Okay, uh, Bird Folkins, Conway Elkins, Tony, and Tony Derling, and Chris Brinlow to the Rural Plan Review Committee for a one-year term from October twenty twenty-three to October twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, item fifteen, uh, C O Treasures Report.
Guys, so counsel, you haven't really had a chance to review this, as I just got it out to you, so, um, our siding issues, the paint peeling, I have, um, heard from the manufacturer. They had sent me a video where they put this new product on. So it, instead of the paint peeling off and stuff, um, it literally is washing off like soap. So they are going to be able to do our entire building. Um, they just want to do a weather test on it. So they exposed the newly coated samples to UV and climate changes in a weather machine. So the Wood Science and Technology Center at U M B has one, um, they're making arrangements to do a UV and climate change test in that machine. It takes ninety days for the process, so they're looking for results by the end of January or February. It will provide counsel with an in-person and written presentation, so. Um, it literally, uh, they had a piece of our siding that was, um, painted, and it literally like washed off like soap, it was amazing to see like, and it went right back to, um, what it was originally, so. You know, like I said, they just want.
Was it gray or was it, looked like new wood?
No, it was kind of like a brownie beige-y color.
Do you have a picture sometime I can see?
Um, I, you can see the video.
Yeah.
Or whatever, so.
I like to, yeah.
And they'll, like I said, they'll probably be, they'll, they said they would do presentations as well. So, um, the tenders that were awarded, the garbage collection, um, that needs to go out, um, this week. Recycling collection, um, due to the changes with recycling, that's gonna take effect on May the first. The Capital Region Service Commission, they were responsible for the contracts for the province for our former L S Ds. Um, they are going to continue with that collection. Um, and they are going to, um, charge us just the four percent, because it's only gonna be a, literally four months or whatever, so they're willing to do that. It was also suggested that we should contact our current provider, which is Pharaoh, to see if they would extend, um, their services that was for the Hanwell, um, portion. So I contacted them, um, today, and a motion is actually on my treasures report. I think, uh, that is the best way to go instead of sending this out for a tender for four months, because, uh, you're probably going to get escalated prices.
Oh, yeah.
So. The kitchen upgrade at the Upper Kingsley Community Hall, that project should be completed by December the ninth. They have forwarded me all the different, um, cupboard layouts and stuff, it looks really nice. We decided not to go with, um, the handles on the doors, they're all like the inset ones, kind of like in a filing cabinet, so there's nothing to kind of catch when you're walking by and stuff, so it looks really nice. Um, I know Nick Way is quite excited to cater the Christmas party on December the ninth for the fire department and a brand new kitchen, so. The parking lot expansion at the fire station, that was also completed, and Chief Crowe is very pleased with the results there. The snow removal contracts, um, they were awarded and they begin in November. So the Hanwell Park Academy M O U, we, the recreation director and I have, um, completed that. We are waiting for Mayor Morrison's signature on that and the school district, and that will be completed, um. We did the job description today for, which we will have to post for three Hanwell Recreation, um, gym attendance. These students will probably have between ten and fifteen hours per week. And we have received many calls from groups wishing to use the facility. We look forward to our partnership with the district and staff and principal, and additional information will be shared the following, um, weeks as we get, um, different projects going over there. So in this report where this is, um, put on our website, I also said congratulations to our newest councilor members and have just added their, um, emails on there. So the treasures report, um, for revenue, um, for the month of October, we had eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars in interest. We sold our skidoo for thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, the accommodation tax levy for August was received in the amount of eleven thousand three ninety-three, and the building permits for the third quarter was forty-three thousand two twenty-six seventy-two. Um, expenses, we have our debentures, um, like our loans for the Hanwell Fire Station and for this place. So we pay the principal and the interest, um, twice a year on those in May and November. So our November payments, um, will be coming up, I think it, one is on the nineteenth and the other ones are on the twenty-first. Um, Pierre de Merchant, um, was paid, you guys had awarded him the contract to paint the church. And if you haven't had a chance to see that during daylight, it looks so much better, it really looks nice. Um, the, our Christmas tree that we put, um, up today, unfortunately, the very top of it got broke when they were lifting it with a boom truck. So it really doesn't, um, look bad, however, that top part, we're thinking that we will put lights on it and put it over by the church.
That much it got broken off?
Uh, about six feet. Or whatever, so.
That's too bad.
Yeah. Um, the two thousand and two pump truck, um, as Chief Crowe said, um, they had to needed extensive repairs, and the motion for that is, um, below. So, um, the process meetings were held, um, to discuss our budgets, um, also our five-year capital plan, we just reviewed, um, what we have done so far and to provide our new counselors with an update on those. So I have a couple of invoices that are over the five thousand dollars. And actually, now that I think of it, um, it says only non-budgeted payments over five thousand, and both of these actually are budgeted for under the, um, a fire department. So one is for the repairs to the pump truck, we weren't expecting to do these repairs, however, there is money in their budget to pay for them, so that was twenty-three thousand four dollars and thirty cents plus H S T, and that, um, is going to go to XL Planting and Machining Inc., so.
It's Plating, sorry.
Yeah, Plating, Plating. Yeah, P L, A T I N.
Okay. Um, the other one is, uh, for Craig Boucher, um, to finish the siding, build a roof and a deck at the fire station one, so that was something that was planned last year, and so, um, he was just able to finish it this year, so that was in the amount of nine thousand dollars, and that was already a budgeted item that we knew of, so.
So we don't need to do those.
I, I don't think that you really, I, if you guys want to, I mean, the motions are there, I wasn't even thinking about it. I was thinking it being over five thousand dollars, but it is a budgeted item, so.
In that case, we don't need to.
Okay.
Well, that's why we do a budget.
Yeah.
That's what's in our purchasing policy, right, so.
Yeah, so with the, um, recycling contract, the original contract that we had, um, it was for the period of January first to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. And we, in the contract, we had the option to extend the term by up to two periods for one year. So last year we extended one, so we still have that one-year term. So I really think that we should just extend it for the four months or until circular materials takes over, so. Um, that one, I think that we do need a a contract, or a, sorry, a, a motion on that.
Don't we read that? Foster, okay. Where circular materials limited is taking over the recycling services in May of twenty twenty-four, and whereas the original contract for Pharaoh Waste and Recycling Inc. for the period of January first to December thirty, uh, thirty-first twenty twenty-two had an option to extend the term of the contract for up to two years, for two period of one year. Be it resolved that the direct, you know, that we direct and authorize the C O to renew the contract with Pharaoh Waste and Recycling Inc. for the term of up to five months until circular materials limited takes over recycling services. The terms and conditions must be the same except for any cost of living increases that may have occurred.
Second there?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
He was reasonable to me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, over on finish business, uh, recreation building, I know where C O give us a little update on that earlier, was anything else to add to that?
Uh, not at this time.
And Rural Plans Progress Report, I know we just struck the committee for that, so there's probably not a whole lot of progress to report right now.
Not really, we had, um.
This is a point, point of order, it's, uh, occurred to another counselor, we didn't actually accept the treasures report. So we did the motion.
Yes, we did the motion for recycling.
Oh. Wait, I need a motion to accept the treasure, or receive the treasures report?
Oh, yeah.
It's accept.
A motion to accept, I'm, I'm moved to accept the C O Treasures Report as presented.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Okay, getting back to the Rural Plan Progress Report.
We had one meeting in October, and we have another one, we're going to have one more before Christmas. We haven't had one in November. So we're doing a doodle poll at the moment, but who's available when it's getting close to Christmas, but we will have one more before Christmas and then hopefully set up a more regular schedule after the new year.
Okay. New business, Hamwell Days Committee. I don't believe that's been struck yet. We talked, we talked a bit about it.
Okay, because you guys had kind of decided you wanted to possibly do multiple events throughout the year as opposed to one big Hamwell Day. So it was discussed, you guys wanted to put it together a committee, so finally to strike that, I guess.
That was a counselor who's no longer here.
I think everybody kind of agreed, though. That's something that they wanted, so.
Yeah, that's what they want.
Yeah.
But can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this something that Taylor would chair? Or are you looking for something separate from?
No, we just kind of want to know so that I can tell our staff like what to do. So is this like a committee that you guys want to be part of? Is this a committee that you just want us to get members of the public on both? I think it's very important to have members of the public on our committees, for sure.
We always have on the Hamwell Days Committee, members of.
Especially this because it's ten years.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so, but then are you, I guess because I wasn't here when you guys had discussed it previously, and obviously the new counselors weren't, so you were thinking of having something every month? Because if we're having something every month, we've got to move on this very quick, so because January is right around the corner.
I think we should put it up for discussion. Where it's ten years, I'm of the opinion that we should have one big celebration instead of a bunch of little celebrations. Like a big celebration in, in, in May would be much, I think it would be better for the community rather than have several little ones that a lot of people probably, especially in the winter time, aren't going to attend anyway, but that's only my opinion. So I'll put it up to council what, you know, what they want to do.
Even May or June, I mean, just because we're incorporated in May, you could go later when the weather's a little bit better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And really, I mean, Hamwell as we see it now is kind of January first.
Yeah, so I mean, it, you don't have to stick, it is just your tenth anniversary. I mean, it goes for the whole year, so you could have your thing whenever.
I think the, the thought process was to have different ones, more to kind of get the community to gel, like Hamwell, Kings Clear, so maybe have something in, at the, maybe Diggle Valley Memorial Park or have something.
We're going to have a place.
I know, I know, right? And then have things in here. I think that was the kind.
I was gonna say, you want a backyard.
The thought process was.
But what does council prefer? Like, you know, a, a major celebration for all the communities? Because then we could do something like, if we had it in that weekend or whatnot, we could do something in Hamwell, we could do something in Kings Clear. We could have it throughout the area. I think it's a lot harder to try to, you know, try to organize several smaller events.
Well, it's certainly harder to try and organize something once a month.
It would be different.
Well, and I don't even think that was set in stone. I think it was more like quarterly. Yes, exactly.
We weren't thinking, I think it was brought up, it wasn't necessarily January.
Right.
But it was like maybe February, March.
Yeah.
When the blue's setting.
But I mean, you could have some smaller events and still call them.
Counselor McKenzie.
Since we have new counselors here now, though, and things have kind of changed, maybe we should do a poll, the poll the board here and see what everyone thinks at the table, which way, which direction we should go. Because that may have changed since that point where it was previously discussed.
That's right, and there's been nothing settled upon, yeah. So now we've got a full council. It's, it's a good time to set it up and see what council wants to do.
Well, probably at a management session would be a whole lot better time to do it than.
It would.
We probably won't have a management session until January, but if you're not having an event in January, it's not as important. It's something that we can bring, definitely bring up.
Or have a special meeting or whatever, I mean, or just have a conversation.
Yeah. My worry, like I said, was that you guys want an event planned for January kind of thing, and we don't have a whole lot of.
Not a lot of time.
At all, so.
Counselor Heisler.
I was just thinking that the committee needs to pre-strut anyway, regardless of when the event's going to be. Because if we are thinking of a big event, then you really do need to get everything in place, bring volunteers together, so.
But if you're going to get a committee together, the committee's got to know what they're going to do, right?
Right, yeah. And also, if you are thinking of a big event, we need to make that decision because we are booked a year ahead for a wedding. So we are already, I think Megan said we've only got like three or four weekends next year that are not booked already. So if that is something that you want to do, we got to make sure that we get the weekend booked.
Counselor Rigoff.
Well, I, I like the idea of how they were saying about bringing the community together. I, I just think the chances, if we do a lot of small things over through the year, you might not get people to come over for a small event. But if there was a big event and it was well advertised and the invitation was out across the community, you might get people to come to something like that. There'd be more chance to come to something like that. I like the idea of the big event.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, definitely think you should go into the management session then in January, but I think a place holder for that. If there's a slot in June, preferably before school ends, before people start going away for the summer, I think we should put it, put, block ourselves off for that on the planner, just so at least, at least we have it before it starts to get booked up. But once we lose the slot, if we didn't want to do something, even in this building, we couldn't do it. So we should probably at least block it off and let the committee figure it out.
Can you question it to Megan? Yeah.
Okay, so we'll kind of postpone this discussion to our next management meetings. Everybody go to that?
Yep.
Okay. Side by side was on here. Where are we going with that?
Okay, so with the side by side, at the last new budget meeting that we had talked, the counselor Crowe had provided you guys with some different information. And we started talking about it, and we thought we would wait until our regular meeting and discuss it in closed session. However, kind of got overlooked in it. We didn't put it in closed session, and I didn't send you out the information again with your agenda package. So I would say take a look at what was provided to you, and that is something else that we can discuss at this, our next special.
Special meeting, our next council meeting.
Okay, and if you guys can't find that email where it was sent out, just let us know and we can.
I'll resend, I'll resend it with the two ones that we need to look at, not, not the other ones that were sent.
Okay.
Counselor Crowe did a very in-depth study on, on a couple of machines that would certainly fit the bill. So if you haven't had a chance to read it, we will get the book to you again, and we'll leave to discuss it at the next special meeting or next council meeting. We're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Movember Donation.
Okay, so with Movember, our Recreation Director is actually doing his own campaign on this and trying to raise funds. And I thought it would be a nice gesture if we do a donation for our staff and council and stuff when they are involved in stuff. So I have done a motion, and you guys can.
I'd like to make the motion here. So whereas many of our residents of Hamwell are affected either directly or indirectly by mental health, prostate and testicular cancer, and whereas Movember is the leading charity changing the face of men's health, and whereas our Recreation Director is campaigning for this charity by raising money, I move to authorize and direct the CAO Treasurer to donate five hundred dollars towards Movember.
Secondor?
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Now, moving on to the coldest night of the year.
So Counselor Fox is declaring a conflict of interest and will be removed.
Should you like me to read that one? Whereas since two thousand and eleven, the Coldest Night of the Year has raised over ninety-six million across Canada in a hundred and sixty-six communities. And whereas one hundred percent of the net proceeds stay local to support the Coldest Night of the Year charity partners. And whereas Counselor Fox is campaigning for this charity with the Run and Walk being, being held on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas Hamwell Council has provided donations in the past, I move and authorize and direct the CAO slash Treasurer to become an annual sponsor of the Coldest Night of the Year and donate five hundred dollars towards the charity.
Secondor? Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you.
Counselor Fox can.
Drag him, drag him back in here.
Tell him he said no.
Nothing this year.
Nothing, nothing for you.
Just what you expected.
No soup for you.
All right, Christmas closure. I need a motion there, folks.
I wish that proof will be given to the CAO to close the municipal office from Friday, December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Two thousand and twenty-three.
Two thousand and twenty-three, and resume opening on Tuesday, January second, two thousand and twenty-four. Stop the party's vacation for a loop time for this closure.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. You don't count, you don't get a vote. Motion carried. All right, approval of unused vacation.
The move that staff be permitted to carry over any unused vacation days on the condition that they be used before April first, two thousand and twenty-four. Anytime in lieu must be used or paid out on or before the payroll on December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you, counsel. Item eighteen, upcoming activities, the Christmas craft show, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I get somewhere to go on my birthday, aren't I lucky? Christmas open house and tree lighting, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And we don't have a closed session tonight, so the date, time, and location of next meeting would be council chambers on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
I get a couple. Secondor?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you, counsel.